Good evening. I'd like to call to order this July 18th meeting of the Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees. Welcome and thank you for joining us. Dr. Merritt, will you introduce our person who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Good evening to Dr. Harriston and Board of Trustees, pardon me, Dr. Murray. I'm very honored to have the opportunity to introduce the person who will be doing the pledge for us today. The person is none other than William McKinley Merritt V., who is a rising seventh grader at Northwest IB Middle School. As a sixth grader, William has had the following accomplishments this year: special honor roll first, second, and third terms; high honor roll term four; first place in the Northwest IB Reading Fair; first place in the Jackson Public Schools Reading Fair; and third place in the Mississippi State Reading Fair. He also participated on the Northwest IB Chess Team and won first place in the JPS Chess Tournament and second place in the Wingfield Scholastic Chess Tournament. William is a member of the Cynthia Church of Christ Holiness USA Church, where he participates in the youth choir, brotherhood, and an active participant in Sunday School. In William's spare time, he enjoys playing, reading, and watching anything related to baseball. And of course, William's parents are William Merritt IV. and Latoya Merritt. At this time, I present to you William Merritt V.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Merritt V. and I am a scholar at Northwest Jackson IB World Middle School. Today I will be doing a pledge in English and Spanish. English first. May please stand and receive the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, Spanish. Yo permeto la etat a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América. Y nuestra república que representa una nación bajo Dios entera con libertad y justicia para todos.
Thank you so much, young man. Mr. Merritt, this is, we'd like to take your picture. And now we'll have our moment of inspiration delivered by the Reverend Klaus R. Tate III. Reverend Tate, please join us at the podium. I'd like to make a few introductory remarks about Reverend Tate. He is recipient of schooling in the Knoxville County Schools, Jackson State University, and New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary. He is yielded by the Drake Hill United Methodist Church of Cliftonville, Mississippi, and the Greater Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church. Reverend Tate is the sole proprietor of Affordable Auto Glass and Turning Point Details and is the father of three, Kristen, Keenan, and Caitlin, the academic fruit of the Jackson Public School District. It is his personal belief we can do more together than we can do apart. Reverend Tate.
Thank you so much to Dr. Murray, to the Honorable Board, to those of you gathered in the gallery. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to come and to share with you. It's a dangerous thing to give a Baptist preacher a microphone, but never fear. Dr. Merritt has given me wonderful instructions, especially as relates to time. In fact, when he told me I had two minutes, I was reminded of a story of two boys who were friends, one Catholic, the other Baptist. And one Sunday morning, the Catholic, or rather, the Baptist boy decided he would go and visit his Catholic friend to learn what he could about Catholicism. And so he sat there in the church with his friend, and he learned what he could about the Eucharist and the transubstantiation and all that he, Baptist faith, or rather, the Catholic faith, had to offer. The next Sunday, the Catholic boy decided he would go over to the Baptist church. And so they were led in by the ushers and seated, and he heard the deacons pray, and he watched the choir processionally, and then he watched the preacher stand up and unfasten his watch and lay it on the podium. And the young Catholic boy leaned over to his Baptist friend, and he says, "What does that mean?" The little Baptist boy replied, "Not a darn thing." But I thank God for the opportunity to come and to share. I want to say that this morning I was startled and started by a article in the Clarion Ledger in Wednesday's edition, Yet Another School District in the Crosshairs of Takeover. This is the school district that I was educated in, the district where my mother labored and worked for 30 years or better as an educator and an administrator. And so this hits close to home. And what we face here in the Jackson Public School District, I also have, as they say on the streets, some skin in the game. My daughter Caitlin is a rising junior at Robert M. Callaway High School on Beasley Road. And so I'm vested in what happens not only here but in Knoxville County and in Mississippi. And so the question becomes, you know, what can we do? I want you to know today that you are not alone. On behalf of Dr. Johnny Cameron Sr. and the Greater Mount Calvary Baptist Church, we offer what we have to help. What can we do? I was reminded, as I looked at the stories, and then the side story about a billionaire donor who will fuel the charter schools, and I was reminded that my mother was educated in the Rosenwall Schools. Most of you know about the Rosenwall Schools, a collaboration between Booker T. Washington and Julius Rosenwall, a philanthropist and president of Sears-Robuck and Company. And they opened over 5,000 schools across the South. Why? Because of massive underfunding of education for African-American children this side of the Mason-Dixon line. And so what can we do? It seems like deja vu. I was always reminded that everyone can do something. Everyone. What does a church have to do with education? Well, we can offer what we have. We can offer our words of encouragement as we together face facts with faith. And so what is faith? Faith is not just words, but it is also actions. My Bible says that faith without works is dead. And so on August 7th, you can vote. And then you can use your words and encourage others to join in and vote. We can all do something. Now, I don't want to get into any deep trouble, and so as we talk about faith, you may be one who only has faith in human ability. And that's a good thing. And so if that's where your faith lies, then by all means, pour it in the bucket. And then you may be one who is of the Buddhist faith, and whatever Buddhist brings to the table, then pour it in the bucket. But I myself am one who prays to the Almighty God, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. And I know that there are those of you who are here with me who will call on that name in the name of Jesus. And so I say that we can do more together than we can apart. God bless you and God keep you.
Man, thank you so very much for that moment. We'd like to take your photo. Thank you, Reverend Tate, for those wonderful words of inspiration. Item three, item two, excuse me, let the record show that four of our six board members are present and seated, and one is on the telephone. So we have five board members present. Next item, the adoption of the agenda. Board members, we received the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as distributed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. That's an aye. Hearing no, nays, the agenda has been adopted. Next, the approval of the minutes. Board members, the minutes were distributed to us earlier. Having read the minutes, do I hear a motion to accept and approve the minutes from June 27th?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes as presented for the June 27th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none, the minutes have been approved and adopted. Item five, public participation for general comments and/or proposed policy issues. Attorney Turner.
Board members, you do have one person who signed up to address you today, but it's actually a personnel issue that I've advised her needs to be handled in executive session. So if you would just accommodate that need and take up that matter when you get to executive session.
Thank you for that. Item six, do we have any discipline cases?
No discipline cases.
Thank you. Item seven, the superintendent's reports and announcements.
Good evening, Madam President, Board members, community. We have just a few items tonight. We are, of course, in the summer months, and so we, there's not a lot going on as it relates to the corrective action plan, but again, we are poised for a visit from facilities starting on Monday. So we, they plan to come out and visit about eight schools, and so we resume that work. Again, nothing has changed since our last report, but at the next board meeting, we should have some updated information relative to the corrective action plan. The work is continuing. We're working now, training teachers specifically in line with corrective action plan as it relates to standard 20. We have administrators being trained this week at Cordoza. I'd like to thank our professional development department under the leadership of Dr. Armstrong, doing an outstanding job in collaboration with the curriculum department under the leadership of Mr. Bobby Brown. So we thank them for that work. Next week, we'll be training teachers. So the work is moving forward in preparation for our students' return. Students will return to school on August 8th. Teachers return on August 6th. And we will begin registration on Monday, July 23rd. We've already had some preliminary registration taking place at, by appointment at Poindexter, but we'll start the process at schools on Monday. Again, we want to encourage our community to, all of our parents, to go out and register. We need all students in school day one. We can't afford for students to miss one, two, three, four days, and of course, definitely not until Labor Day. So again, we encourage our parents to register so we can receive our students on day one. So that concludes superintendent's report.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Merritt. We appreciate your team and your leadership going through this corrective action plan execution, and we are excited to learn of the good progress we're making across the district. Board members, are there questions or comments? Item eight, our information items only. Item A, Bond Committee Chair Presentation by Mr. Leroy Walker, one of our bond campaign co-chairs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, let me first, as always, give honor to God and say to you, thank you very much for this enormous opportunity to serve. Just wanted to bring a couple of items to your attention, of which I really wish that you would take heed, obviously as an opinion, but I have been in several meetings, forums, as well as I have spoken to countless individuals in the community, and I just wanted to share a couple of my personal thoughts. As one of the co-chairs that's prayerfully generating the capital that's needed in order for this campaign to flourish, a couple of things have come up, and I just wanted to bring your attention. First of all, I got to give thanks to Sherilyn Miller. Sherilyn Miller, I'm gonna tell you, young people, she's an outstanding CFO. She does it well. She answers to questions well. She doesn't leave any stones unturned, and I'm extremely proud of her. I just wanted you to know that, and I know that our team is proud of her as well. So I wasn't paid to do that, but I just want to let you know. First, there's been countless concerns in the community relative to the accountability piece. I really wish that you would consider looking at some kind of resolution or a document that says, "We will do X," you know, provided that all of these dollars fall in place. We will not deviate from the format that we have created. I think that that would help a little bit because the community is really concerned about that, and those of you and everybody up there in this board has been there, so they know that those questions are coming up, and they're hitting me with it right and left. So I think that we need to make sure we consider that, and that's your call in terms of how you address that. The board proceeds should be used to clear up those standards that you talked about and document those standards that have been cleared up and publicize them. That's very, very important. I learned today, and I thought, working with the 100 Black Men, I thought I knew all of the standards of our heart, but I see that standard 30 is a real tremendous blow to any piece, and I think that that's very, very critical. And I'm glad to see we're working on the infrastructure and those kind of things. As a person who mentored in the school and speaks in the school, I know it's important. Obviously, I'm for the bond referendum, but my job is to do my level best to help get the message out there as best that I can. Provide some mechanism through which the community is going to be able to participate or learn what items are going to be serviced. And I think Don McCracken did a good job today where he talked about he was going to have a representative from each of the seven boards to sit on a particular committee, and they in turn would flesh through that. A lot of people don't know how bonds work, and bond money, it has to be used for what it's designated for. And people need to make sure that they understand that in the community. And I've been touting that and saying it on the radio and those kind of things, but I wanted to make sure that you was aware. Fran Bridges does an outstanding job. She sends more emails than any lady I ever seen in my life, but she keeps you informed so you will always be connected. And I'm gonna tell you, the reputation that you have right now on this board is stellar. People do appreciate it. They're just concerned about what has happened, and what we got to do is try to get them not to run those old tapes in their head and begin to look at where we're going to be moving from here. I've already mentioned about the oversight piece. The other piece is, think before you react. Don't be hasty in trying to meet a target when it may not be productive at the time. A superintendent is very, very important, but I'm gonna say to you, the important piece is make sure we get these standards cleared up, and I think we need to clear these standards up first, and I think you might want to consider that going forward. And that's just what I'm hearing in the community. I'm only, I'm a messenger. I'm a cup bearer. Okay? So I'm the cup bearer coming to you and just saying to you, these are the kinds of things that I'm hearing. The other piece is, let's work together. I'm glad to see that this board is engaged. I'm glad to see that this board is getting out in the community. The 100 Black Men of Jackson are solidly behind this effort. I want to make sure that you are aware of that, and we are going to do whatever we can to help motivate and elevate this particular referendum to make it happen. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. I'm not going to get into weeds as it relates to a lot of other things that I know you hear about. I just wanted to share those four things because people say, "Are you gonna say it to the board?" Yes, I am. I'm gonna say it to the board. I'm gonna ask, "Can I please be on the agenda to do it?" So I've done that, so I kept my word, and I'm not accustomed to being a liar. So I just like making sure I tell the truth, and believe it or not, we're doing very, very well. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, any.
Thank you so much, Mr. Walker. Let me just say that we on this board appreciate your service and your willingness to take this leadership role, and we are very familiar with the good work that you and your wife, Terrence, have always done for this district through the years. We warmly welcome your being the cup bearer and making sure that our cup overflows with knowledge from our citizens. I will yield the floor to my colleagues, but I would like to say that these four items are very much exactly aligned with the kinds of lessons learned that we have witnessed as we've been through many community meetings and are aligned with our thinking as well.
Good, great.
So I see no antagonistic antagonism or problem with that, with our wonderful Sherilyn Miller by our side, Dr. Merritt, his team, Ms. Williams. We're going to be sure, Mr. McCracken, that our citizens understand us as we welcome the opportunity to hear from them.
Great.
Board members, do you have questions or comments?
I would simply agree with you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
You're more than welcome.
I deeply appreciate your support, and I for one would absolutely support measures that we can take as a board to assure public accountability, oversight, and transparency in this bond issue, because as Mr. Walker said, that's what I'm hearing out in the community as well, and I know that we all want to do that as well. So those steps, ideas like the Oversight Committee, which I've heard Mr. McCracken talk about as well, I think are excellent ideas that we should take some time to move forward with in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah, thank you. And in fact, we are posting the times and venues of all of our town halls. Several of us will be visiting churches. We know we don't have all that information, so please, if there are events going on, backpack giveaways or whatnot, email Ms. Williams because she's keeping our master calendar to be sure that we can be as many places as possible, the six of us, our co-chairs, Fran Bridges, Dr. Fran Bridges, retired professor at Jackson State, Attorney Brad Pygott, and Tyrone Hendrix, and Amber May.
May.
May, thank you. Amber May, who are leading up the campaign. So we deeply appreciate what's going on, and we welcome the opportunity to learn, and we look forward to being transparent and accountable, and, because I don't think any of us are accustomed to being known to lie, so we will only do our best to represent our citizens well.
Well, thank you very much. Also, I just wanted to mention, I did speak to the Congressman, Benny Thompson, last night, and he told me he had talked to you as well.
Yes.
So he had some real hard questions of which you and I sit down and get, and have prayer on, okay?
Oh, amen. I know the Congressman. That's about, sometimes that's all we can do is have some prayer. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Item B, review of policy triple C evaluation of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Harriston, Dr. Murray, other members of the board. Before you, our two policies for review, the triple C evaluation of the superintendent, and this policy simply says that the board will review and evaluate the superintendent according to statute, and the statute requires the evaluation to be based on the assessment components and benchmarks that all the statute requires. And so we've made those changes. This policy, I believe, came out of the Policy Committee, and we thank them for that, their work, and it will be placed out in the schools for review and brought back for approval.
Thank you. Item C?
The next, I'm sorry.
I had a question on that policy. In the statute, is there a timetable or a, for evaluation to occur? I am particularly thinking-
It only speaks to annually. So in terms of when during the year the board conducts that evaluation, it's solely up to you.
And I have a question as well. I know that this particularly came to our attention with the Mississippi School Boards Association pointing out that we needed to include a reference to state law in our evaluation. They also suggested that we actually adopt an instrument for that review, which is in their, their sample policies that they offer. Is it your opinion that we should include that as, you know, the actual potential instrument we would use for evaluation or leave that open?
I think it, here's, I guess, the best thing. It certainly doesn't hurt. It's more likely that the superintendent or any member of the public or staff who was interested in finding out the process of how the superintendent is evaluated will have access to the policies rather than the Mississippi Code. So to the extent that, you know, I would tell you legally, because it's in the code, whether or not you include it in your policy doesn't matter. But I think for someone who wants to know how it works and what the district is going to do, it's helpful sometimes to cite the language of the statute. So I'd say it's probably helpful and better information for the board members and those who are going to be looking at and using the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next policy is AFA, also known as EBAA, which is the emergency closing of schools. And this policy is broken into several parts, and again, it originated from, first, Ms. Turner, and I developed it, and then went to Policy Committee, and the Policy Committee had some noted changes that were well-deserved. So basically, the policy allows for the superintendent to close schools in emergency situations, and it also allows for the school board to close schools. And thanks to Ms. Turner, during the weather crisis and the infrastructure crisis this winter, she discovered that there was broader authority for the school board to act in certain situations, and so that language is also in the policy. We have taken out the procedural language, and we have made that a separate document because the procedures, you know, might cause us to not follow them exactly, and so we have a policy and we also have procedures that govern that. This policy, again, will also be sent out to the school community for review and brought back to the school board for approval. Thank you so much.
With that policy, Madam President, I just would like to note that I believe the Committee, and with this policy, will address two of our big concerns with the closure of schools last year, and that was the, us being forced to make up days even when the governor had declared that two of the days were states of emergency. So we'll be in a situation where we'll have more discretion over make-up days, and the situation with our classified staff last year, and the ability to go back and be able to pay our staff members so that they don't lose out on their days of pay. So I just wanted to point that out, that for the public, that we are actually trying to address these issues that we faced last year.
Thank you for bringing that to the attention for those who have not been able to participate in the deliberations, that these policies are a direct response to what we've heard from our citizens, and particularly our employees, teachers, and families. Item D, location change for school administrator for the school year 1819. Ms. Lyons?
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Murray, Dr. Harriston, members of the board, the administration presents for information-only location change for school administrator, listing in board material for the 1819 school year. listed in board material for the 1819 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. We did receive this information earlier and have read it. And, uh, are there any questions or comments from Ms. Lyons? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms.
Item nine, Information Action Items. Consideration of Election of Board Officers for the 2018-2019 school year. And, uh, Attorney Turner, I will turn this over to you.
Board members, you may be aware that under your policy with regard to board officers, you are required to elect officers at your first regular meeting in July, um, which is this meeting. And so, um, what the policy requires is a, a two-step process by the board. Um, one, in prior years, the board wanted to reserve the option as to whether or not they would follow a nomination process or a rotation process. Um, under the rotation process, you know, the, there would just be a step-up. Secretary to Vice President, Vice President to President, and then the next longest-serving board member would become the secretary. That's the rotation method. Or the nomination method, um, is where the board just says from the floor that any board member can nominate another board member. So the process that the board normally follows is you first decide whether or not you'll follow the nomination process or the rotation process. And with that decision, you either have the board members rotate or you do your nominations from the floor and conduct the election. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, because your board officers were elected not very long ago when you all came on the board, that you'd like to continue with the slate of officers that you have. My suggestion to you to implement that would then just to be to go through the, the, the steps of the nomination process, and you just have someone elect the current slate of officers to continue serving for the next year. And I think you can take care of all of that in one step with a motion and a second. And if that's the board's wish to, um, approve that in one motion. If that's clear.
Uh, that is clear. And I think we have someone who will make that motion. Is that correct?
Madam President, I'd be happy to renominate our current slate of officers to their, um, the positions they are currently serving for this next year.
Do I hear a second?
Can I second?
Can I, can a candidate second?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we continue with this current slate of officers for the upcoming school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppo, oh, aye? Is there aye on? Opposed? Hearing none, that motion has been approved. Thank you, Attorney Turner. Thank you, colleagues, for this opportunity to continue serving in our distinct capacities. Item 10, the fabulous Ms. Sherilyn Miller. We have, uh, four items. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray. I present to you four items under Consent Agenda Finance. Item A is the approval of disbursements and accounts payable activity funds from June 16th through July 6th. The approval of formal bids, um, which is the awarding of bid number 3078 for food service kitchen equipment to the lowest bidder meeting specifications. Item C is the approval to increase the adult meal prices for food service effective August 8th. And also then, the last one is the approval to award bid number 3079 for frozen foods, meats, crackers, chips, uh, and other products.
Thank you so much. Do I hear a motion to collapse these?
It's a consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have to approve it?
Well, we do.
All, okay, we have to approve. Do we hear a motion to approve?
So move, um, I move that we approve the consent agenda items under Finance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve these items under Consent Agenda Finance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this has been approved.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Miller. Please give, uh, our respects to Ms. Hill and her team this summer.
She's here.
Is she here? Okay. The summer feeding program was marvelous, and, uh, I was able to visit at Blackburn. And thank you so much for your work and your service, you and all of your colleagues. Okie dokie, item 11, Consent Agenda Items General. Dr. Sargent, approval of agreement between JPA.
We can pull items from the consent agenda.
Okay. Do I hear, uh, a motion from anyone as you come up, Mr. Sargent, to identify particular items?
I would like to, which Dr. Sargent's coming up to just, I'd like to pull Item A. I have a question about district-to-district transfers, so I'll, I'll pull Item, uh, B just for the purposes of asking that question. And I have some questions about Item F. Nope, excuse me, not F, E.
We'll go through those. He can do together first.
We could, we, if there's none others, we can approve C, D, and, or B, D, and F.
So you want to pull A, B, and E?
A, C, and E.
A, C, and E, you want to pull? So we need to, and, well, let's, uh, those are two different people.
Yeah, actually, yeah, and again, the que, yeah, so I'll just, I'll make the motion then to approve items, uh, the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Okay, and-
Second?
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the re, pull the remaining items on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, aye? Well, we're here in our opposition. That has been approved. Thank you. Now, Dr. Sargent?
Uh, good afternoon, Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. Uh, you have before your recommendation to approve the contract between Jackson Public School District and TE 21 Incorporated. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sargent. We did have a very instructive, uh, work session with you and your team, and, uh, I have no questions at this time.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dr. Sargent, um, this is the bid for our assessment company. Could you share, uh, with the public, um, the advantages to going with this, uh, package relative to the, um, old vendors that we were using? We did go over this in the work session, but just like to go over it for review. And then I'll follow up with some additional questions.
Yes, sir. The primary advantage for going with this company than going to the previous companies we had this past year is that we had two companies that were providing a combination of our benchmark assessments and our formative assessments. And, uh, what took place last year is that our students were required to take these assessments in two different platforms. Uh, as everyone knows, we have to, uh, administer all of our assessments, both benchmark and formative, online. So our students had to take their benchmark assessments, uh, online, uh, through a company called ATI, which is Assessment Technologies Incorporated. And they, uh, took their formative assessments, uh, for the subjects of math and English Language Arts, and COLT, which is a Kirkland online assessment tool. Even though both these companies, as all companies do, work hard to mirror, uh, the state exam to make sure our students get a very similar experience, uh, the two platforms do look different. Uh, so this is an effort to have our students in one platform for all, all assessments that they will take for the 1819 school year. Uh, also, the advantage of going with this company is that this company, uh, was the only company that we, that found that were able to customize the assessments for our curriculum office, uh, as requested. And so those are the two primary advantages for having this company, uh, moving forward this year, uh, for our benchmark assessment program.
Thank you for that. And it's my understanding that a number of the neighboring districts use this assessment tool as well. Um, could you speak to any reference checking you did on this vendor with neighboring districts? And maybe districts in other places as well?
Yes, we checked references with Ocean Springs, uh, Rankin County School District, Madison County School District, and Clinton School District. And, uh, all four districts had very positive feedback, uh, regarding this company and their partnership with the company. Uh, they did express challenges with technology, which is typically expected when you onboard a new platform. Uh, but they spoke very highly of the accommodations that the platform, the company made to make sure that the platform worked, and that they were very diligent to working through those, uh, issues that they experienced. And they all said that they were looking forward to, uh, year-two implementation, uh, with TE 21 and their platform partner.
And it's, it's my understanding that this platform is, uh, a little bit more expensive, um, than our previous assessment. What additional are we getting for the additional money that we will be paying?
Um, it's outlined in the budget. Let me recall, let me see, we have the, let's see. We're giving an additional, last year we gave two benchmark assessments. Uh, this year we're proposing to give, I believe, a total of four benchmark assessments. Uh, so that increased the cost. Um, also, uh, the item banks that we purchased, of course, this company just had, uh, different in price. Uh, however, uh, if you recall, uh, the two contracts combined last year, both for ATI and Kirkland, uh, was $495,000, $95.80. I'm sorry, that's the contract that we're recommending. Uh, the, the, the total for the contract that we had, the two combined, was $469,535. Uh, so, uh, that's a difference of a little under $30,000. Uh, so to onboard this new platform is about the same amount as it was to have the two platforms previously. So one of those platforms by itself was cheaper than the platform we're onboarding. Uh, but to having the two platforms, the cost was about the same.
Okay, and, um, we will get a person on, in the district on site that they will provide to train our teachers on the implementation of this technology?
Yes, sir. We will, we have been assigned a proj, project manager, uh, through this RFP that will work with us. Uh, we will also be partnering with this company to conduct a alignment study, uh, which is something that has not been done during my tenure in Jackson Public Schools with, uh, our assessment providers. And, uh, they're also going to partner with us to do annual program evaluation, uh, on the services of this product. And there's also a, uh, parent piece, where our parents will receive a, uh, feedback reports, uh, after each benchmark assessment given. And those reports will be provided to parents so they can see how their students are progressing, uh, throughout the year on those assessments. And that's something our parents have not been provided in the past.
Okay. And, um, given that a number of the neighboring districts are also using this vendor, what have we done to ensure that we are paying roughly the same? Uh, have you looked into, uh, you know, I want to make sure that if Rankin County is using this or Clinton or Madison, that we're not paying more than they are, poor child or poor student?
So, Dr. Murray, did you want to, do we share?
We are not, we did receive that information. We are, um, not paying anymore. There are some pro, there are some pieces of the, um, of the product that we chose to upgrade. For example, a test bank. And I think we chose a, a superior version, and it's only 40 cent for us, more than, uh, the lower version. And so things like that, uh, the personalization or the, um, uh, for us, that, that's the increased cost. But we're paying, uh, on a level with other districts, surrounding districts. We're not paying any higher cost than they are. In some cases, uh, because of our size, we're paying less. Lower payments than they are. And we did check that with Ocean Springs and Rankin County, which are districts that have the same package that we have.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the agreement between JPS and TE 21?
I so move.
Second?
Second?
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this item is approved. Thank you, Dr. Sargent. The next item, C, District-to-District Teachers?
Um, and this was, so my main question here was, um, and I may have pulled the wrong item. I, I largely, for, um, so we don't have another board meeting, at least on the schedule, between this one and the first day of school. And if there are, um, parents in the district who want to bring their students into the district who may have missed the deadline, um, I guess this is for the board. Is it, what can we do to make sure that we, we make sure we get those students so they're able to start on the first day of school? If there are some of those folks.
Yeah, Dr. Hollins, who is our director of enrollment services, uh, he keeps up with the parents that have missed this deadline. And so once we get a number of those, uh, parents that need to be approved, then we'll approach Dr. Murray about us asking you all for a special board meeting to approve them before the first day of school. Uh, so typically, the, the past two, three years that we've been going through this process, we've had to request that. Uh, because it does, when, when they're moving from district to district, not only do they have to get your approval, but they also have to get the, uh, approval of the district that they're either leaving or that they're coming to. And so they have to work with their schedules as well. And sometimes they don't meet as often as we do. Some districts only meet once a month. Uh, so we do, um, reach out to you all to ask for an additional meeting, uh, to make those approvals.
And that can be conducted via phone with a quorum.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, Item C.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Item C, District-to-District Transfer, with the understanding they will make special effort, make sure it happens if children need to enroll later. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item's approved. Item E. Um, who is that?
Dr. Shepherd.
Attorney Shepherd?
You skipped me. This, uh, we called Dr. Knox. Yeah. The, members of the board, this is the agreement. We refer to it as the Chart MOU. It's the, uh, Abstinence Plus, uh, document that we have every year with the Mississippi Department of Health. And this year, there's a stipend, uh, for reimbursement if we chose to do that. And I'll ask, hopefully, I'll be able to answer any specific questions that you might have regarding it.
Um, the, the main questions I had about, uh, this program was, um, when do students, w, at what grade level does the curriculum begin?
It's middle school. It's, it's targeted toward middle school students.
Okay.
And now, uh, in the past, it's been targeted toward middle school students. This year, uh, we'll have the, uh, flexibility to, to move that into high school. And so, but when the pro, when they came aboard several years ago, they focused, uh, on middle school. But they would like to, and convers, and having a conversation with them, they definitely, uh, want to go into high schools as well. So middle and high school.
Is it district-wide?
Uh, yes, it's available to all.
In middle school, eighth grade? Up to the school to this time?
It's, it's, it's up, it's, um, all middle school. I think it, uh, can start as early as sixth grade, uh, but, um, it's middle and high school. I'd have to get the specifics on what grade it starts, but I, I know it's middle school and high school. But ideally, you know, as early as sixth grade, we need to start having these conversations, uh, with, with students. So, um, we can get that, that specific grade level information for you.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it being in sixth grade. It is more of just, um, based on our own experience, wanting to, you know, want to see it. And so, um, anyway, just wanted to get that.
But we have some flexibility, so we will, we will make sure that, that, uh, the group knows when we have our meetings that that's our will. So that it start as early as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve Item E?
So move.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the agreement between Mississippi State Department of Health and the JPS School District. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item is approved. Thank you, Attorney Shepherd. Item 11, Consent Agenda Item Personnel. Ms. Lyons, Approval of Staff Personnel Matters.
Good evening again, uh, to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. The administration presents for approval, uh, Staff Personnel Matters as listed in board material.
Thank you. We did receive that material and have reviewed it. Board members, are there questions or comments?
I move that we approve, uh, Consent Agenda Item under Personnel, Approval of Staff Personnel Matters.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Consent Agenda Item A, Approval of Staff Personnel Matters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item is approved. Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Do we have any other business? Item 14, there, there is no other business. Item 14, can, do we have consideration to hold an executive session?
I move that we can, um, consider holding executive session.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we will now consider to hold an executive session. Opposed? Hearing none, we will now consider to hold an executive session. And we need to, we need to ask our audience to please be dismissed. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your support.